Is yours?
Hey. Ready when you are. Good evening, the city of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty four is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March two thousand and twenty five. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being recorded. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in this hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stembridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Okay, uh, Mr. Stembridge.
Good evening, Madam Chair, present.
Good evening, Ms. Better Brazza.
Good evening, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Floor is yours, Mr. Stembridge.
You say good morning.
Oh, did I? Oh, my God. I'm used to the Tuesday hearings. My apologies.
That's okay, but we will start with the hearings for scheduled five P M. First, we have case B O A one five two nine seven six nine with the address of thirteen oh one to thirteen oh five Boylston Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Excellent. Please proceed.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Brian Judge. I'm an attorney with a law firm of Coolson Stores, located at four hundred Atlantic Avenue in Boston. Now, we represent the appellant, Fenway Enterprises, thirteen oh one Boylston Street LLC, which is an affiliate of Samuel's and Associates. I'm joined today by Mike Fitzpatrick, Senior Vice President of Development for Samuel's and Associates. Uh, we're here today to request an additional three-year extension of the longstanding zoning relief for the property located at thirteen oh one to thirteen oh five Boylston Street in the Fenway neighborhood to allow the property to continue to be operated for parking um for up to forty-three vehicles for a fee, accessory parking for a restaurant operated at the property, and ancillary off-street parking serving uses located on neighboring lots. Um, there have not been any changes to the parking layout since we were last before the board in two thousand and twenty one. There has been a change to the restaurant in that the former Tasty Burger has moved next door to the Van Ness Building, uh, but the same owner now operates in Our Father's Deli at the property, uh, but that has not changed the the parking operations there. Um, the specific relief that has been granted over the course of many years is a variance and conditional use permit to allow a parking lot, ancillary parking respectively, uh, within the North Boylston Neighborhood Shopping Subdistrict of the Fenway Neighborhood District, as well as a conditional use permit for off-street parking facility, uh, accessory to a restaurant use within the restricted parking overlay district. Uh, we did want to mention, uh, for the board's benefit that in in addition to the three-year sunset clause, the prior decision from um, uh, two thousand and twenty one contained two other provisos, uh, both of which have been satisfied. Um, specifically, the BPDA issued uh its design review approval for screening and buffering in November two thousand and twenty one, and the Boston Transportation Department reviewed and approved the existing signage at the property in January two thousand and twenty two. Um, and ISD confirmed satisfaction of those two provisos in early February two thousand and twenty two. Uh, so in conclusion, for the reasons set forth in our appeal and discussed today, uh, the appellant respectfully requests an additional three-year extension of the existing zoning relief um from December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty three to December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty six. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
We don't have any, um, I don't really have any questions, but I was, um, I was hoping that Norm can read B T D's recommendation.
Uh, I certainly can. Um, for thirteen oh one to thirteen oh five Boylston Street, comments from the Boston Transportation Department are as follows. Uh, one, fifty percent of all spaces must be eight, eight and a half feet by twenty feet. The remaining spaces should be seven feet by eighteen feet. Most of the time, this lot is used for Red Sox games. Number two, a sign must be posted clearly to indicate the following. License number issued by by the B T D, total capacity determined by B T D. Cost of the park, cost to park regardless of the reason. This is important to prevent illegal use of the lot. This includes Red Sox games, which tend to be more expensive than a standard fee. Name, address, and phone number of the licensee for any problems experienced while parked in the lot. Those are B T D's comments.
Great. Um, thank you so much. Can I ask the applicant how many spaces are compact versus um the conventional dimensions? Do you, do you know?
Turn to Mike. Um, I did. I might get some on the associates. Um, I will have to dig into this a bit and see what we have for extinction between standard and compact. I think the majority are standard-sized stalls, so it's going to take a few minutes to pull up the dimension plan, which I'll find out.
And not a problem. I just wanted to understand if you had um kind of the ratio of standard versus compact.
I I don't offhand, but I will try to dig it up right now.
Any other questions from the board?
I don't have any further questions.
Great. So, thank you, uh, Mr. Stembridge for reading those. Uh, as uh the applicant looks that up, let's take public testimony.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Maggie Van Squire from the mayor's office of neighborhood services. We'd like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. We are unaware of any concerns with this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Have no raised hands. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Fitzpatrick, not sure if that gives you enough time to.
I guess if it doesn't, it's okay. I guess the other um question I have is, do you see any concerns with what B T D was recommending for the for the use of the property?
Right.
From from what I heard, from what was listed, I tried to take notes of everything. Um, I did not, nothing jumped out at me as a concern, and I can, we can certainly post the information that was being said, and we have a parking operator on site that would be managing that for us. Um, I certainly want to look at the size of the stalls, though, because I don't know how that could impact what we have for the count that's shown on the plans.
Yeah, I mean, I think you'll get, in addition, um, if all of them are majority standard size, when when you accommodate fifty percent of be compact, you should probably, you you'll probably have more. Um, but I just wanted to make sure that you were okay with some of those terms from B T D.
Yeah, um, it certainly sounded reasonable, and I not again, nothing jumped out at me, um, but it was a lot to take in quickly, so.
Don't worry, I'll re- I'll restate it.
Understood. We'll incorporate that into our recommendation. Uh, uh, any other questions from the board? Uh, with that, may I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with three proviso. One, that it undergoes BPDA design review with attention to curb-cut dimensions and to include one-way entrance egress demarcation and bicycle parking. Two, that fifty percent of the spaces must be in half by twenty feet, and the remaining spaces should be compact, seven foot by eighteen. And three, that a sign must be posted clearly to include the following: license number issued by B T D, total capacity determined by B T D, and cost to park.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Sorry.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one five one nine nine four one with the address of five oh six East Third Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain to the board?
You're gonna mute yourself, Lindsay?
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. So, hi, everyone. Um, this is Lindsay Callahan. I am the owner of five oh six East Third Street in South Boston. I uh am here today to uh request the addition of a third floor. It is my primary residence. I live there with my wife and my two children. Um, they are four years old and two years old. Uh, we purchased the property in two thousand and twenty um and have lived there since. Um, we we love living there. It it's it's great, but my kids are getting older, and our neighbors to the left had at at one point had a mirror image home, so it was identically the same to us. And prior to us moving in, you could sort of see it on the plans right there. Prior to us moving in, they uh are a developer uh went through the process of building up. Uh, it's wonderful. You know, they have two children now. They have a lot more space, and the neighborhood, it's great for us. Our kids are uh go to school in the neighborhood. We'd like to stay. We'd love to stay, so we um are here in hopes that we can start building that that third floor. And on the third floor, it would just include a full um primary bedroom with a closet and then a working space, since both of us do work from home pretty often.
Is it essentially a mirror image of your neighbor's addition?
I, it is, it's pretty close. Uh, we have elected to not have any uh outdoor space on the back. Um, I just don't think that we would use it. I think that we would much prefer the living space. They have a uh a bit of a roof deck on the back. I don't think I've ever seen them out there. So, um, I would prefer it to be more of an office space, but other than that, the look of it and everything is uh essentially a mirror image, other than going back a little bit further than what they have.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions from the board?
No, no further questions.
Okay, hearing none. Uh, may I have public testimony? You're on mute, Lydia.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lydia Plasky with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. And a Butters meeting for five oh six East Third Street was hosted on November sixth. The proponent presented plans. There was no opposition to or support of the proposal. The Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association stated no opposition to this project. At this time, our office is unaware of any concerns with this application. We would like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA design review, paying special attention to the third story to provide a little bit of a setback, so it kind of matches the the adjacent property.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next, we have case B O A one five zero one zero one four with the address of thirty-one forty-one Washington Street. With the applicant and or their representative explaining to the board.
I think I call.
They were on earlier, I think.
Can you raise your hand if you're on or representative? Okay, Danielle, you can unmute yourself. You're a panelist. You're still on mute.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Paula Martinez. I'm here to um the new owner of thirty-one forty-one Washington Street in Jamaica Plain. Um, and I'm here because of the change of name from the old owner to my name.
Is there any, uh, are you doing any other work, or is it just the name change?
No, just the name change.
Okay. Um, any questions from the board? No. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. This time, the mayor's office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office is unaware of any concerns related to this simple change here. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck. Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one five two seven one six zero with the address of one eighty-eight to one ninety-fourth Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain to the board?
There's an attendee, um, Chris Davis. I sent a request to unmute you. Go ahead.
Hello, I don't believe you can see me.
Okay, I'm trying to let me, I'll make you a panelist now. You just have to press accept, and uh it will mute you for a second. Uh, you can unmute yourself. You become a panelist. Okay. Yeah, you're on mute. Okay, and then you'll have the option to turn your video on.
Um, okay. For whatever reason, the video is not working. I'm, I apologize.
No, no, you're fine. Thanks. We see you.
Uh, okay, oh. Hi, I'm Shonda Davis. Um, I'm the homeowner, me and my husband are the homeowner of one eighty-eight, one ninety Fuller. Um, we just would like to add um dormers to our home to have to add living space for our third floor. We do have a four, three children and an older, my stepdaughter has come back home, so we just are looking to have more space for our family.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, uh, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. This time, the mayor's office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, due to some personnel changes, I don't have a lot of information regarding this project, but I will state we're unaware of any concerns at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no raised hands.
Okay, uh, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck, man.
Thank you.
They're all set, Shonda. Thanks. I'll be in touch with you afterwards.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one four nine eight six two five with the address of four to six Milton Avenue. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain to the board?
Simon, if you're on or you're representative, can you raise your hand or unmute yourself? Don't see anyone on that may be on for this hearing.
Okay, uh, do you want to proceed and circle back, Mr. Stembridge?
Sounds good. So next, we have case B O A one five two one six nine three with the address of eighty-three DeForest Street. Yeah, yeah, against and will their representative present to the board?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, members of the, hi, members of the board. This is a very small uh non-conforming six hundred and seventy square foot house, if you can believe that. And we are doing an addition both as a second floor addition and a rear addition to sort of flush the house out to a more of a more of a normal size that's in the neighborhood to a total of two hundred. I'm sorry, two thousand three hundred and thirty-eight square feet will be the total. Uh, we have a violation of front yard, rear yard, and excessive F A R. The F A R, I don't know why we're we're under, we're way under the point five, but that's okay. Uh, and if I can read this other, the fourth violation. This fourth violation, which was simply uh non-conforming, the re- uh, extension of non-conformant, which is exactly what we're doing. Uh, the existing house is actually so small that there was a small addition on the side that was added to house the rear door and refrigerator. We're removing that and extending the body of the house itself back and up. Um, it's standard design. It matches a lot of the houses in the neighborhood, and actually, a lot of the houses in this neighborhood are on the small side. They've already done a lot of work like this before. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, uh, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. At this time, the mayor's office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, O N S said the applicant circulate a flyer uh to a Butters within three hundred feet. Um, I can speak, we just heard back from one of Butters with questions regarding the height, uh, but we're unaware of any further concerns or questions at this time. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I have no additional raised hands.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one four nine eight four seven one with the address of ninety-two Wyndham Road. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain to the board?
I see Mr. Lopez. Do you want to unmute yourself, or can you unmute yourself? Jessica, is he a panelist? He's a.
Yeah, he's on. I I sent the request to unmute you as well, but you should be able to do it on your, oh, there you go.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my name is Roger Ari Lopez, and I live on ninety-two Wyndham Road in Hyde Park. I really love this place, uh, but it's pretty small. It's only eight hundred sixty square feet, and I would like to get an addition on the side of the house, only eight by sixteen square feet. Um, so I'm planning on getting married next year and adopt a few more dogs, and I would like to have an extra room where I walk in from the walking and clean the dogs before I go in inside the kitchen, uh, because I don't have much space, and um, uh, it's too much money to go out, so I would like to just add this extra room room on the side, uh, like a full season room, and I'm not adding a gas heating there, because I do have, if you see here, they split. Uh, I spoke with the electrician, and he said it's much easier to just transfer this one to the room there. I can, I can only use, you know, uh, when I'm walking my dog and come back home and get a uh warm room to clean up the dog.
Got it. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. This time, the mayor's office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process, we had the applicant circulate a flyer to a Butters within three hundred feet. Uh, we received a letter of support uh from a direct abutter next door, uh, that was very pleased with the proposal. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Uh, hello?
Yes.
Uh, okay, I just want to add.
Motion carry.
Oh, it means it's approved or?
Yes, 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 sir.
Thank you so much. Can I leave now or?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you so much.
Next, we have next, we have case B O A one five one five zero nine three with the address of fourteen Talton Road. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain to the board?
You can unmute yourself. Done. Yep.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, we are seeking to relieve, uh, seeking a relief for an existing non-conforming structure at fourteen Talton Road that exceeds the minimum step backs in front and sides. The proposed plan includes new bathroom, kitchen renovation, relocation of stairs, and second-floor dormer, front and rear. Project calls for a new front entrance with steps and a landing. The the drawings account for an overall plan for a new driveway, a family room addition, and and a backyard deck with accessible ramp, all of which are designated as phase two. We are seeking consideration for the first phase of the project.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. This time, the mayor's office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process, O N S hosting the Butters meeting on September seventh. I don't believe there was any concerns raised at that meeting. Uh, the applicant then went on to meet with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on October twenty-fourth. Uh, the Neighborhood Council voted to approve or support this project unanimously, uh, without defer to the board. Thank you.
You.
And I have no raised hands.
Okay, uh, with that, may I have a motion?
And I'm trying to put for a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, we can, we can go back and call for case B O A one four nine eight six two five with the address of four to six Milton Avenue. If the applicant is present and will the representative to explain to the board?
Eric or Chelsea, is that you? Uh, there's a raised hand here. Hold on. Uh, Eric? I just made you a panelist, so if um this is your case, can you unmute yourself?
Hello?
Oh, that's Eric. Oh, hey, Eric. Uh, do you know the applicant?
Um, yes, uh, Simon Suazo. I worked with him um for the this four to six Milton Ave project. Um, I believe he met, he had his Butters meeting um September eighteenth.
Eric, is he, sorry, Eric, is he on? Because he needs to, he needs to present, not you. We're not taking public testimony.
My apologies. Um.
No, no, that's fine.
I do not see him on, no.
Okay, do you know how to get him on? Do you have that?
I I called him, I called him um when I didn't see him on the first time, so I've just been calling him.
Okay. Madam Chair, if if the board wants it, we we can wait five minutes, or I recommend to. Madam Chair, i- if the board wants it, we we can wait five minutes, or I recommend to defer to to the full board hearing on January twenty-third.
Okay, so Eric, he did not respond to your call, correct?
No, he has not.
Okay, then, uh, uh, I'll ask for a motion from the board.
Yep, Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion to defer the case to the January twenty-third hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Uh, Eric, please, uh, if you're able to communicate that to, uh, the applicant, that would be, uh, helpful.
Definitely. I will, um, I will call him again, and then, uh, I'll communicate the new date to him as well.
Thank you. All right. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night, folks.
Thank you.